Up a day, the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Cultures called to order today's Wednesday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty one. The time is three forty-three P M. Notices for this virtual public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets, and also published in the Guam Daily Post on Wednesday, September eighth, twenty twenty one, and again on Monday, September thirteen, twenty twenty one. We are going to hear today a bill number one four four dash thirty-six L S introduced by Senator Frank Blass Junior. I wanted to thank my colleagues for being here, beginning with the sponsor of the bill, Senator Frank Blass Junior, Senator Anthony Ada, Senator Telo Taitegui. Thank you for being with us today. And now I'd like to invite Senator Blass to introduce the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for all who attending today's hearing today. Bill number one forty-four dash thirty-six L S is an act to amend subsection fifty-five point one five of chapter five title nine Guam connotated relative to crime, the crime of hindering apprehension or prosecution. What this bill intends to provide is to amend the current statute to include a subsection seven that basically says an individual is guilty of hindering apprehension or hindering apprehension or prosecution if the individual withholds information from or does not notify the appropriate agency about the noncompliance with a person's pretrial court ordered parole or probation requirements. And then further amends it to include them in subsection seven B that first off hindering apprehension or prosecution is a felony of the third degree if the defendant knows that the charge made or liable to be made against the other person is a felony of the first degree or second degree, or here's the amendment, if the charge made or liable to be made against the other person is an offense whereby the victim is a minor below the age of sixteen. So what this basically provides, Madam Speaker is, you know, as you can tell, but you can probably tell in these, the last, the last two hearings on the bills, there was a focus in as far as criminal sexual conduct crimes. And in the case, in this case, crimes in general. And we all see this, you know, every day, you know, the, our newspapers have the stories about crimes. And a lot of times half the stories about trying to find individuals who, who have perpetrated these crimes. And there are individuals who know of these individuals and have held, you know, helped to hinder or their apprehension, protect them from being prosecuted or being apprehended. And just to put a little bit more teeth in this, okay, that if you, if you know of an individual who's, who's, you know, basically committed a crime and is not following the orders or not following any of the requirements placed upon them, that you're just as guilty. And you're just as gullible, you're liable. Why? Because you know, the thing is, if you hold on to that person and that person goes off and does another crime, then you know, what happens then? What we're doing is then making it responsible to, for the community, for those individuals. Look, if you're going to go ahead and hold an individual, help an individual elude justice, that there is a price to pay for that. And that's what I intend to do with this legislation. I know there is some contention and there's some concern with regards to, okay, just how wide or who, who are these individuals that can be held responsible or liable? So my, here's my thing, okay? If you've got the information and it's, and it is hindering the apprehension, and it is causing a suspension or that this person cannot be found or cannot be prosecuted, then you're just as liable. And that's all I have to say. So I'm gonna wait for the further discussion on this bill and save my, the rest for my closing. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Blass. I'll now accept testimony from the Attorney General's Office. Please state your name and position for the record.
Ladies and gentlemen, Madam Speaker, for the record, I am Deputy Attorney General Stephanie Mandiola, the General Counsel for the H E's office. I'm here today with Assistant Attorney General Christine Tenorio, one of our senior prosecutors in our Prosecution Division and head of our Sex Crimes Unit. We do not have written testimony today, but we will submit written testimony afterwards. The position on this bill, if the last bill we were discussing was quite broad, this one is even broader. Our concern deals with the fact that this one is even broader. I think I jumped before Attorney Morrison, now Senator Blass jumps before me, and he really just sort of hit the nail on the head with our concern is, who really is, does this apply to, and how are we going to establish beyond a reasonable doubt that a person withheld information or their act is an omission, as we like to put it legally, there, the act is an omission with a particular intent, which the elements are listed in this particular, in this section. So as I was listening to his introduction about what he was trying to accomplish, again, I think it's something that we can all agree on, that people who help others to avoid prosecution or the like may have a certain sense of responsibility to the community. What he really touched on was the nexus, and I think perhaps that might be what is missing in the bill is, how do you connect the person who you're trying to expose to criminal liability to the omission in withholding information? Also, who are you withholding the information from? How do you know that that information was supposed to be provided? The more obvious cases are, you know, the person's in your house and you're not telling someone, but the act there is a little bit more overt because you're holding them in your, in the house. And then, you know, there's a way to connect what you're doing to your exposure to criminal conduct. The more worrisome scenarios are, if there is, even if there is a nexus, for example, and third party custodian type situations or other relationships between a person who is on probation, for example, and somebody who's responsible for them in any particular way, you may not necessarily know what exactly constitutes the violation or what, what extent of the violation is supposed to be reported. The person who violates probation would have a lesser exposure than you because now your exposure is to criminal liability as a misdemeanor. So, um, after hearing Senator Blass's introduction, I think we may be able to support the intent if there's further clarification as to what exactly is the omission that, or the act that's trying to be identified to expose someone to criminal liability, if that makes sense. Not withholding information or not notifying a certain, or the appropriate agency, sort of as it's written here. Just, I guess, to sum it up, it's, it's concerningly broad. Thank you.
That is refreshing. Attorney Tenorio, is there anything you'd like to add?
I know this is not a sex offense bill, but I do want to say how I think that this would apply and where I think it's necessary. And maybe that would help tighten the language that the legislature wants to institute. So I could see how this is a concern, especially given Senator Blass's inclusion in subsection B about where the victim is a minor below the age of sixteen. So often we have significant others or spouses that are allowing the, the, the sex offender to continue to sexually abuse their, the child, and they know about it and they don't report it to police. Or they know that there's supposed to be a no contact order, but they allow the contact. So that I do think does need to be covered by some type of law because it's currently not covered by any law, not child abuse, not complicity to anything. So I do, in that sense, think that that is what this, you know, would agree that we need this type of language, but we, yeah, that's, it would need to be, maybe, maybe I guess tighter language where I would say what actually can, what actual conditions that person would, is supposed to report as far as, I mean, in this case would be, you know, there's a stay away and you didn't prohibit it. That would just be my only suggestion. But again, that's just me coming from how this would relate to sex crimes. I don't really have an opinion about other types of crimes.
All right. Thank you very much, Deputy Director Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and for the record again, I'm John Morrison. I'm the Deputy Director of the Public Defender Service Corporation. So I'll pick up where Ms. Tenorio left off. I think of the bills that we're discussing today. I'm most troubled by this one. We do have laws currently in place that would, that basically penalize assisting someone overtly to evade apprehension. And we've seen those prosecutions in the last few years where someone takes the defendant food or provides them a place to stay. And then those people were charged and convicted of some crimes for hindering apprehension. But our current law doesn't deputize every person on Guam and give them a responsibility to, to phone, to call someone if they think they're violating their release conditions or the like. And then make it a crime for them not to, generally when crimes of omission are concerned, they're going to require a special relationship between people, like a parent's responsibility to care for their child, for instance. But this law is so broad that it basically requires every person on Guam to call someone in or else they're going to be charged with a crime. And they really might not have all the, all the information in front of them anyway, or any ability to make a correct report. I think one of the things that's most troubling about it is how I would see it playing out in practice. Because, you know, frequently this is going to be the person's spouse or significant other that has the person at their house and they see them violating a release condition or they see them violating a term of their probation. And those can be relatively slight things. If somebody consciously didn't go to their treatment that week and the wife didn't phone it in, this law is so broad that she's getting charged with a crime for failing to call probation or the authorities on the person. That can put that spouse in a really dangerous position because this might be someone who is violent or has been abusive toward her. And now she's in a position where she has to phone the authorities on somebody who is potentially her abuser. Maybe if it's not physical abuse, it might be financial abuse. So this really puts the entire family in a delicate situation because it doesn't specify that the person's children couldn't even be included. If a child violates a law on Guam, they can be hauled into the family court under jurisdiction there to answer for charges that would have otherwise been chargeable as an adult. So if we have a gentleman who's in his house and he's on probation and is not doing what's required of him, this can result in all of his children going to the juvenile court. This can result in his spouse and second to be another being hauled into court for a misdemeanor. This way even, this is even so broad that in domestic violence situation where the spouse is the actual victim of the probationer's crime, if she, if she sees him violating a term of his probation and doesn't phone it in, apparently immediately, she can be charged with a crime. So I think this is the most troubling one we've seen. It's just so broad. It deputizes every person on Guam and gives them an over responsibility to do law enforcement, probation and parole's job for them. Probation and parole are allowed to enter people's homes and make searches. We have electronic monitoring for people on pretrial release. We have third party and requirements for bail applications where someone has to have basically a baby sitter around them that would have a special responsibility. And justice for those people, if they violate their terms is frequently swift because they're hauled in front of the judge on an order to show cause and required to show how this person could have possibly violated their release conditions while they were under this person's control and supervision. I think I've gone on long enough. I don't have much else to say than that, besides that this is a terribly overbroad law. And when we have laws that don't put people on proper notice that they can be held criminally responsible for omissions, I think it's max of a law that's going to be found unconstitutionally vague and overbroad. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Morrison. We'll now open it up for Senator Blass. You may begin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the, basically the presentations from the attorneys. And maybe the question is for the three different attorneys, is there anything in this statute here, whether existing or to be as proposed to be amended, that basically would bar or prohibit you from using prosecutorial discretion on whether or not this can be charged or not?
I think I could try to answer that. I would defer to H E Tenorio, H E just norio anything, but it, nothing would, I think the answer is no, I'm just, it's, there's, you can't, there isn't necessarily a statute that you would create that would in effect bar prosecutorial discretion. So I think the answer is no. That's what you're getting at.
Yeah. So there is nothing, you can exercise prosecutorial discretion. Right?
Yes.
Okay. So just because it's there doesn't necessarily mean it can be charged, that's right?
No, no, it could always, just because it's there, no, if it is there, then it can always be charged.
Yes.
Every, yeah, so every person who
There doesn't mean it can be charged.
It can, because it is there, it can. But just because it is, because it's there, doesn't necessarily mean that it will be charged.
Well, so you can take, you can basically look at the circumstances surrounding the situation to decide as to whether or not it is, this, you know, it does fit the requirement, does fit the need for it to be charged.
Yes, I think.
Okay, you got, secondly, would it be changed? Would it be beneficial if, if you were to look at the bill and you were to go to subsection seven, you know, which is proposed amendment, if you were to use the words knowingly and intentionally withhold information from, you put, put the words in knowingly and intentionally. So that there is, okay, you do know it, you have the intention, it's just been your intention, would that then help to narrow that scope, that broadness that seemingly exists in it?
I would, I deferred to other attorneys as well, but I would say no, because subsection seven is a subsection underneath the introductory language of A where there's already an intent element. So you would then, you would already have to read with the bill as it, with the proposed language in the bill as it stands, the withholding of information or the not notifying is connected to an intent requirement to hinder, prevent, delay, discovery, apprehension, prostitution.
That couldn't that be the argument for the first six sections, too?
Yes, it is. So that, that intent, I guess what I'm getting at is to add what I'm, another way, if I'm, if I'm answering the question clearly, adding the intent element into subsection seven wouldn't necessarily narrow it because the intent requirement is already built into the introductory language of subsection A. And yes, it applies to all the subsections.
Already apply, right? So basically, basically based on this, this could apply broadly to everybody, even if this amendment wasn't there.
No, well, the section applies to everybody, but the difference between subsections A, one, two, one through six is that there's an overt action. So there's actually something that a person is doing in the way of prosecution, hindering, preventing, delaying, apprehending, prosecuting, convicting, et cetera. With the, with, with the withholding of information or not notifying, an individual is not doing something. So that's the part that I think we're all touching on that is worrisome. But if I may, I think what would address the issue where, that the attorneys are sort of having is, if there was something identified, an additional element perhaps identified to connect the reporting requirement, so that it's not just any person withholding information, but identifying that an individual has a responsibility to report that information. Therefore, if they're not reporting information, they are acting by omission, they're not doing something, then that is punishable, so to speak.
Anybody else? Attorney Morrison?
I, I think that covered it, actually. I think, I mean, the question was, one of the earlier questions was whether or not the government would still have prosecutorial discretion. And yeah, there's, there's nothing in here that would prohibit their prosecutorial discretion as in all statutes, in all laws. However, I think it's important that we have laws that can stand the test of time and then guide the prosecutors in what they should be doing and don't just stand for propositions that people should be scared of them and scared of laws that are never actually resulting charges being filed. So I don't, I don't have anything else on those questions.
I, so as for me, I agree with what Dag Bendiolis said about the applicability. But I do just want to clarify what it's, it, the statute is, does, with the amendment. A prosecutor would still have to prove that a person intended to, you know, have someone avoid prosecution by their withholding of the information to authorities. So I do want to say that Mister, I don't think it would necessarily apply to Mister Morrison's earlier examples where a, a person suffering from, you know, a domestic abuse victim who, who withholds information because she's afraid of being beaten, not because she's trying to hinder prosecution. We would never prosecute that under even this proposed language. So that is in the sense where prosecutorial discretion would come from, but it's not really discretion, it's more just, it doesn't fit that you wanted to hinder or delay his prosecution. So that's all I'll say about that. But if there is, I think, if there's just an additional language, as Dag Bendiolis said, like what type of, I think it's, I think maybe the focus should be on what type of noncompliance, because someone could be in violation of court order if they're drinking. So you know, if someone sees someone drinking, that could be anybody sees somebody drinking and you know that they're not supposed to be drinking because they're on DUI probation, for example, then you get, you're liable under this because you're not reporting them drinking. So if the focus is on some type of, you're really putting someone else in danger, like a third party minor victim in danger, as long as that's added to that subsection seven, then I think the focus, it would be more focused.
I understand and I appreciate that. And this is why I proposed the, while it can be inferred in, you know, basically in the body of already existing, that's a law, is that it's basically the affirmation in saying that if you knowingly and intentionally withhold information, you know, that there is some, that you do know that that individual was on pretrial release and wasn't supposed to be able to do this, as opposed to somebody who saw the person. Okay, you know, and didn't know. This is in a case where the individual does, he, they did know and they did intend to hold it, withhold it. You know, to be, and again, it's to be able to provide the tools to the justice system for being able to, you know, I don't want to say scare people into following the law, but that there is law that exists that if this happens, this, that if you do this, this could occur. Recognizing as well, which is why I asked the initial question, is there anything in the existing statute or in the proposed to the statute, for the amendment to this statute that bars or that prohibits the use of prosecutorial discretion? Okay, I know, you know, I'm going back to my experience in law enforcement, working with, with, you know, with attorneys both on the, you know, on, on the government side and on the defense side. A lot of times we look for those little intricacies in the law to be able to, to adjudicate, dispense the law properly. And here is just being able to provide an extra tool. Again, that's a tool, it's a tool that's in your toolbox, but it's a tool not necessarily that can be, that needs to be used. That said, though, is, I'll work with you and trying to find the language that will be specific, specific for this. But that said, though, is then with the, with the second amendment to this statute that is found in A B, is there a problem with that? Is there a problem with it, with A B, the amendment of A B? That's fine.
Um, I think that it is, it's fine, except where, so I, I think that, I think I want to allude to what Dag Bendiolis said earlier. If someone else, let's say, if the person, if the offender who's on probation, if the probationer is charged with a misdemeanor himself and you witness him violating, this actually makes it a third degree felony for you witnessing the violation and not reporting, and that's higher than what that person would face, faces as his actual crime. That's the only, that's the only issue that I can see with it. Otherwise, the language itself, I don't think is problematic.
For my part, I'll just echo that. It's the language itself is not, is not necessarily problematic in the phrasing, but on the effect of it would, would be, because you, individuals would be exposed to punishment worse for, um, worse than the actual offender.
But the law, the language existed like that already. All we did do is clarify it even more for those below the age of sixteen. So it still exists that way, right?
Not necessarily, because the link, the phrase right before the additional language narrows it to a first or second degree felony. And the section in question exposes someone to a third degree felony. So it's clearly tiered that the person who's responsible, the person hindering apprehension would only be exposed to third, which is the lowest. When the offender is exposed to a first or second degree, which are both higher. But adding the language about having a victim that's a minor below the age of sixteen is a little bit more broad in that there's different levels, there's misdemeanors, third degrees, misdemeanors, third degree, second.
My intent of that basically is, don't go causing criminal sexual conduct on a person below sixteen years of age. It didn't, yeah. I saw, I see, I see what I'm seeing, what you're saying. But understanding where I came from and as far as the intent of the legislation, okay? I want to make it very difficult for those individuals who, who prey on victims below the age of sixteen years of age and those that help.
And those who assist, yes.
So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Blass. Senator Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just like to thank the, everyone from the H E's office and the public defender for coming out to testify on these bills. I think the bottom line is what we're looking at is strengthening the laws to protect our most vulnerable, and those are our children. Uh, I think the bottom line is what we're looking at is strengthening the laws to protect our most vulnerable and those are our children. In the past, we, I've introduced legislation that, uh, that strengthens the, 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 the the penalty for that. And I think that we need to continue to, to, uh, protect our children and to protect the, the, the sanctity of, of the home, especially when that's where it's, it's most trusted. And those people that are, are held in, in positions of authority, uh, parents, anyone, stepparents, aunties, uncles, they all need to be held to a certain accountability. And I think these bills will, will strengthen that. And I think working with, uh, the AG and the, the public defender's office and our colleagues, uh, let's, let's do that. Let's continue to work to, to protect our, our most vulnerable. And, um, you know, there's a lot of challenging times and, uh, we, we keep our children home from school this past year and a half. And if you see what the newspaper said, that, um, CPS has had so, over seven hundred reports of child neglect or abuse. So let's, let's work together to strengthen the law and hold those accountable and put them where they need to be and, uh, do what we can. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Adda. Senator Taitikwe?
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. Um, I'd too like to thank everyone who's here today, uh, the Attorney General's Office as well as, uh, the Public Defender's Office. Thank you so much. This piece of legislation, actually, when I was reviewing it, I, my question too is to what extent our family or for, our close friends or perhaps even employers of an offender made aware of individuals' court order, uh, requirements? You know, how are we all supposed to know that? You know, uh, many of us don't even, uh, you know, keep tabs on especially individuals who, or even want to associate with those who are in trouble a lot of times. And sometimes you get into a situation where you're, um, you're at the wrong place at the wrong time. And lo and behold, you know, you're, you're going to be prosecuted for something you didn't know anything about. And now you have to prove yourself. Prove that you didn't know it. And that becomes very, you know, almost puts in a situation that you're held hostage, hostage. Uh, in the event the Attorney General's Office want to use you for something and any kind of prosecution. So it gets, it's, it's very, very broad, you know, in this legislation. And I just don't want to see those who are, you know, innocent uh, be put in predicaments like this that, that, uh, they, they knew nothing about because they don't keep tabs on everybody's court orders and requirements of an individual, whether they're supposed to be drinking or not drinking, or whether they're supposed to be around a certain neighborhood or not knowing that, um. So I think definitely this piece of legislation needs some work on, you know, uh, moving forward on it. Uh, of course, I'd like to move forward on all this legislation that would, uh, any legislation that would, um, assist in putting those, those individuals who commit crimes, especially against our, uh, most vulnerable, our youth and, and put them away, you know, um, without any deals, you know, just to be able to put them away. But I think, um, if anything, moving forward on this one, we need to be more focused and specific so that we don't harm any, you know, those who are innocent, uh, those who are bystanding or in the wrong place at the wrong time, not knowingly, and then have to justify their actions. So, um, I appreciate the conversation on this particular measure and, uh, look forward to any kind of write-up. So thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, thank you for spending the afternoon with this, uh, to the Attorney General's Office and Public Defender's Office. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taitikwe. I'm glad that, uh, they brought up earlier the discussion on those who might not be reporting something out of fear. And I think so that was adequately discussed. And I think, um, Attorney Tenorio mentioned that for, oh, no, that was, uh, Attorney Morrison who mentioned that for third-party custodians, they also have a special penalty that would be assigned to them that they not been reporting, uh, or withholding information. And so I guess, um, what I'm taking away from this is that under the new proposed subsection seven, it's not exactly clear. Well, it's very broad. Who, uh, would be liable for withholding information under this language as it is? It would be everybody or anyone. And, um, if we could narrow that down, we should narrow it down to who, who should have that duty, right? Third-party custodians perhaps, and, um, I don't know who else, but I guess I would look to you for additional testimony in that regard. As well as the term or does not notify the appropriate agency, we could better define that. And, um, but I do see, I do see the, you know, the importance that if we have someone who is accused of an offense against a victim, they are out on pre-trial release or something, and then we can't find them. And there is a huge risk that they are, you know, committing that offense again or putting somebody in danger. And so anyone withholding that type of information, I can see, you know, how we would want to strengthen our tools in that regard. Uh, so any recommendations or further recommendations that I, any of you can submit, I would appreciate. And again, so we would hope this bill open for ten more days for testimony. And please let me know if you require additional time. I would now like to ask Sponser to close on the bill.
Well, once again, thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you all for staying with us here this afternoon. And to be being, to be able to provide some very fruitful and very thought-provoking discussion uh, with regard to, to this bill, to my colleagues, uh, who also contributed to, to, to the discussions. Thank you very much as well. I'm not going to apologize for my conservative and for, for, for my, my hardline stance with regard to wanting to protect our most vulnerable, our children, you know, as, and for those individuals that, uh, that, uh, need to be able uh, by, 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 by our, our community and stuff. I'm not going to take that. I'm not going to apologize for that. I'm not going to apologize for wanting to almost appear that, that, that these were very strict. I intended to make it very strict. But I, at the same time, I recognize that this is a deliberative, uh, uh, process. This is a democratic process. Uh, and I will work towards being able to address the concerns, uh, which are legitimate and I, I understand. So that we can basically provide a law that not only can stand the test of time, but, you know, can also be proven and, and can be enforced and, and, and proven in a court of law. You know, that at the end of the day is, is, is a much better law than a law that, you know, we've got to prosecute by and then it gets thrown out because the law itself, you know, didn't make any sense. It was draconian for that matter. And so I, I look forward to working with, um, Madam Speaker, you and, and the committee to be able to address, uh, you know, some of the concerns. And I reckon as obvious, these are not concerns that basically says throw the law, throw the, the, the legislation up. It's language that would help to improve the, the, you know, the language of the legislation so that it becomes basically a law that, that, you know, that can be enforced and can be prosecuted. At the end of the day, like I said, you know, if, if you were up to me, don't go to sleep if you, if you've, uh, committed any, any type of crime against an individual. I don't like that. And I, I intend to continue to, to say that in, in a lot of my legislations. You know, with that, Madam Speaker, I want, I want to thank you. Um, I want to thank you all. Um, I'm going to embarrass her right now. Okay? You know, for, for, for the sake of full disclosure and, and everything, okay? And as, as you can all see, okay? Sometimes even in my own household, certain things, but we also have a lively discussion. Okay, I want to thank and I'm very proud, uh, to be in this discussion. Assistant Attorney General Christine Tenoy, who happens to be my daughter. Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you all. And then, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. And thank you to all my colleagues who've joined me this afternoon for these very important bills and this very important discussion. I especially want to thank the Attorney General's Office and the Public Defender's Office because I know your time is very valuable. But again, I can't stress enough how your assistance in these types of bills is really, um, we couldn't do it without you. So, and I, we couldn't do justice without you. So I appreciate your time and the efforts that you put into your testimony. There being no additional individuals to present for the testimony, this committee will consider hearing on Bill one four four dash thirty-six COR concluded. The bill's duly heard. I will allow ten days for further testimony at senator turahigwam@gmail.com. The public hearing is now adjourned. The time is four twenty-two PM. Situs masa, sitos. Be safe.
Thank you, Senators. Thank you.